This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 8, 2025. The meeting is available by GoToMeetings as well. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? With a correction that our second public hearing is at 9:15, not 9 o'clock.
I will move to make that motion. We also need to remove the Elder Bridge claim until we receive a contract service agreement signed.
Todd made a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Pam, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Motion passes. Approve the minutes of July 1st, July 2nd, and the claims.
I'll approve the minutes, and then as Todd said, so I'll approve the minutes for the July 1st and 2nd meeting, and the claims with the exception of the Elder Bridge claim that's that will not be paid with this claim session.
Do you have a main motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. County Attorney.
I don't have anything unless you have something for me.
Any questions for the county attorney? Sheriff?
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Sheriff.
The only thing I would have for you is continue to get bids on updating out of date and what electronics and IT stuff at the sheriff's office. So I'm waiting on a bid for a replacement of the cameras in the jail. When I get that bid, I'll get you all a copy of that. It's probably going to be somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000. There is money to make those upgrades, but certainly want you guys to look at the bids before I go forward with that. And that money would come out of the room and board account and jail fees that we charge inmates to stay in our facility. So other than that, that's all I have. I'll answer any questions you guys. Okay?
So I was looking over the utilities bill. That seems really high for an entity within the city. So maybe I'm just, because I thought you guys got a new air conditioner last year, right?
We did.
For recently.
Yeah, and the bill did increase from that. And Dave had said to me that it might take a year for things to stabilize, normalize, and be a good feel for what that monthly bill is going to be. But I think maybe a year or so ago, I sent an email and mentioned to the board that it's coming in $500, $600 a month more than what it was prior to the replacement. But it may be doing other things that the other system wasn't doing either. Maybe that's a question for Dave, but yes, it is, and I hope that it kind of somewhat stabilizes.
I wondered if you were drying porn over there.
Not doing that, no. Just keeping the place running.
Okay.
So, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Department of Health and衧业 discussion? All right, none of the department have discussion. County engineer?
I don't have much for you this morning, other than construction on the bridge south of McIntyre. Looks like they're working on piling on the north and south abutments, another sheet filing. South side getting ready to get the apartment finally over there, and there's some piled in on the north side yesterday to kind of protect the street. I know they've been fighting a lot of wet conditions with the rent they've had, so as far as I know, that project is still progressing. Other than that, I don't have much to report this morning.
Any questions for the engineer?
Are you going to stick around in case when we get to 14?
Yep, I'll be here. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, and we'll jump down to number 11 on the agenda, discussion on possible action on opioid settlements. Aaron, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I think Rachel, I think you've all got the email or the paperwork about it. So here, last couple days, something came in the last day or two, but what we're talking about here is the one that came in before, like last week or sometime, week or so ago.
Yeah, it was like two weeks ago.
So that's the one where, you know, they talk about there's a potential settlement, blah, blah, blah. And I think that the attorneys with the Milwaukee area, who represent all the counties, said, "We encourage the counties to participate in this settlement." I would, I mean, you know, you'll get a little money from it. Difficult to exactly say how much. They sometimes send out that chart with some amounts in it, but sometimes it varies a little bit. But if you, if the board were to want to go through with that, basically all you need is, you know, have a motion, a second discussion, and a vote on that you want to move forward with that. You could authorize, I suppose, well, any of you guys, Rachel, me, or whoever, to sign whatever documentation needed, and then get it back to the attorneys of Milwaukee, right? So it doesn't have to be any kind of a fancy thing. It doesn't even, I didn't prepare any written resolution. I don't think you need one. Rachel just notes it in the minutes that, you know, hey, we discussed this possible settlement, moved second to discuss, approved. Rachel, Aaron, whoever, sign the document, get it back, approve, have a vote, and there you go.
All right.
Would it be wise to have you signing those agreements or documents since they're legal documents?
I mean, I'm happy to do it. I don't think it probably, I would either probably have me do it, Rachel do it, or the board chair.
Right.
So.
All right. Does anyone want to move forward with opioid settlement?
You don't make a motion, have Aaron sign the opioid litigation.
Mark, made a motion? Is there a second?
I second it.
Pam, second. Any further discussion?
I'm just going to note in there that it's for the St. Ansgar settlement.
Thank you, Rachel. Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I made a note to myself to do that. All right? You guys will get, I'll keep, I'll tell you, I don't keep them a loop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have five minutes. Number 12, discussion on St. Ansgar TIFs through a project.
Five minutes.
You have five minutes. I'll cut you off. You can always come back. Good.
I put this on the agenda because I presented a project for the supervisors to consider for what they're going to do TIF. It's a project that's an engineer. It covers infrastructure. It's economic development. It needs a St. Ansgar. I was told that you have over 150 structures that need attention before you consider this. I was also told that it was inappropriate. I don't see how it's inappropriate at all. Another question I have is, did the city get placed on the urban renewal at this time? If not, I believe all the roads in Mitchell County are urban renewal anyway. And this entire project lays in the ditch right of way, two of your roads. I'm just asking why it's inappropriate.
I'm not sure I said it was inappropriate. I don't recall that word. What I said was, we have 152 structures. I believe there's 28 of them that are either structurally deficient or are weight restricted. One-lane bridge closed, and the county needs to focus on those structures. We also are going to be maxed out on our FM funding because we've borrowed ahead to the extent that we don't have the FM funds in 2027. So I guess that is what I said in regards to our infrastructure.
Inappropriate, inappropriate was not used. I apologize. Possibly listen to it. Do it.
So I have a question. Does the city of St. Ansgar have TIF funds available or the option to use city TIF for any of that kind of project?
Well, we had a learning session on TIF. You should know the answer for that. We have to give permission through the county and stuff for TIF. And cities handle it different than what the county can.
Right.
Be doing on a rebate basis.
Okay. I was specifically speaking about the city. Yep.
It's a way to have growth and get there. This project has been waiting for funding for two to almost three years, funding that we haven't gotten yet. I think that it's, I think we need to consider, and that's all I was asking, was consideration.
And the the completion of the sewer system there that was quoted by the engineer would allow the completion of 40 additional homes? Is that correct?
It's the next step we need to take. We've done all, we've put all the sewer through we can without building lift stations, where we can ram the load up and have it through it by engineering.
I'll expand on Pam's question a little bit. So I'm not sure the St. Ansgar, how St. Ansgar structures their TIF. I mean, TIF can be either used as collecting money from a TIF district, or you can do a rebate process specifically to developers that are doing stuff in the town. I don't know what grant holders is that with, as far as that's in a TIF district and you're collecting from that. But there's other ways to do projects, and it's not always has to do with TIF. The city and other municipalities, a lot of times, will either do a general obligation bond to pay for their projects, or sewer and water projects, revenue bonds, whereas you purchase a revenue bond to pay for the project, and then the people that are, the municipality actually has their rates adjusted for their sewer and water rates to pay for the bond. So I'm not sure if you're even looking at any of that, or if you're just asking us to pay for the whole thing. I'm not sure.
On the other hand, yes, presenting this as a TIF project to the county to consider.
Okay.
Because that's what you were saying you were looking for.
Okay. Okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
Got one minute to go. Okay, we'll go back to number seven. Aaron. All right, it is 8:45. I am now going to open the public hearing for ordinance 61. Any oral or written comments received by the board?
I wouldn't, I don't want to interrupt. I would read, read the title of the, you know.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I would just read the title of it.
The first consideration of ordinance number?
Yeah, just read, because the agenda has the title, right, Rachel? I put that in there, right.
First consideration of ordinance number 61 entitled, "An Ordinance Imacting a New Right-of-Way Control Ordinance to Regulate Certain Occu- Occu- Cins and Uses of County Right-of-Way." Sorry.
But there's been newer, yes.
I had some comments, but go ahead.
I had some also. I've also had comments.
Rachel, any?
I just have people request a copy of it.
Okay. Any discussion from the public? Hello?
Hi, I have a statement on behalf of Summit Carbon Solutions I would like to read. It is about three minutes long, so bear with me. Okay. Hi, my name is Kaylee Gibson, and I work with Summit Carbon Solutions. The Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals has recently reaffirmed the lower court's decision in the Summit Carbon Solutions versus Shelby County Iowa Board of Supervisors case. The decision clearly states that federal regulations and state laws preempt ordinances at the county level. A quote from the ruling in reference to county permitting. "If Shelby County denies the application, it would prohibit a pipeline company from building in a certain location, even if the IUC permits construction there. That possibility makes the pipeline company permitting requirements inconsistent with state law and thus preempted. Similar to the proposed ordinance here, the ordinance passed in Shelby County requires companies to apply for a county permit, potentially changing the planned route of the pipeline even after they've received a state-level permit from the IUC. This could stop Summit from constructing a pipeline even if the IUC says they can. If a local law makes it impossible to follow a state law, then that local law cannot be enforced. According to Iowa law, pipeline companies need to get approval from highways, railroads, federal and state agencies when they apply to build a pipeline. These laws don't mention local town or city governments, implying that local municipalities are not supposed to be a part of the approval process for pipeline construction. Lastly, in the interest of the public, the court noted that the county may not pass unenforceable ordinances in a roundabout attempt to undermine valid federal and state laws. Even beyond the recent ruling, which clearly outlines federal and state authority, 320.4 of the Iowa code states, "The State Department of Transportation, in case of primary roads, and the Board of Supervisors in the case of secondary roads, on written application designating the particular highway and part of the highway, the use of which is desired, may grant permission to lay gas mains in highways outside of cities, to local municipal distributing plants or companies, but not to pipeline companies. This section shall apply to or shall not apply to or include pipeline companies required to obtain a license from the Utilities Division of the Department of Commerce. The reason the legislature included the pipeline exception in Section 320.4 is because it had already given the IUC authority to decide pipeline routing in Sections 479, 479A, and 479B. This falls directly in line with the Eighth Circuit's recent ruling that the permitting of pipelines falls to the jurisdiction of state and federal governments. The proposed ordinance would impose additional local requirements on activity that the state and federal regulatory bodies already govern and permit. As a result, they are preempted by both state and federal law. We understand that counties have questions and concerns, and representatives from Summit Carbon have been and continue to be happy to meet with representatives of the county to answer those questions and discuss your concerns. But we do not believe that the ordinance is appropriate as a matter of policy, and more importantly, we know that it would conflict with both state and federal laws. In all practical aspects, this ordinance would prohibit Summit Carbon's pipeline from going through the county and thus deny farmers and ethanol plants the project's benefit." Thank you for your time.
One thing, I just want to comment what Kaylee said. Number one, I didn't, I didn't draft that ordinance. I've kind of been through it a little bit, but I haven't like flowcharted it like I typically, like you typically do for an ordinance, you know, to really know what it says. I think maybe tip bubble was involved in that somewhat. So I don't want to comment too much. I kind of wanted to say that I understand what Kaylee is saying. There's, I think there's probably a lot of what she's saying is prob, is somewhat correct. Now, I'm not the expert on this thing, but I just call things to your attention. And I'm far be it for me to interpret what the Eighth Circuit opinion said, because it says a lot. One of the things, though, that seems to focus on, if I recall, I think the Eighth Circuit Court of Opinion, if I'm thinking about the right opinion, it seemed to have a problem with ordinances that tried to control safety. I don't know if it directly necessarily addressed, I don't know that it said counties can't regulate at all. I think it really kind of stressed, and I'd have to look at it a lot closer. I think it kind of stressed, hey, these ordinances are counties trying to regulate safety stuff. We're not going to let that happen. But it didn't necessarily say counties can't maybe regulate some other things like right-of-way, you know, to protect infrastructure and things like that. Now, that being said, whether it's a good idea or not, I have no idea. That's what you guys have to decide. And you also have to take into account, I guess, is, you know, if the ordinance is passed, you know, does legal action come, and then, and then those things I just brought up will be sorted out, you know, through more litigation. So my opinion, I'm not contradicting what Kaylee said. Maybe just put a little context that there are maybe some things that counties can still regulate to protect. Whether this is, whether this ordinance falls on that side of things, who knows? I will tell you this, this is my personal observation, not so much a legal observation. I, and I don't know whether this is appropriate to say or not, but I think, but I don't care how I say it, the courts have made it pretty clear, and I'm not, I don't necessarily agree with you, courts have made it pretty clear they're going to side, in my, they would disagree with me. They'd say, "Ruffin, you should shut up. You're undermining courts" and all that, and I'd say, "Well, maybe, but I'm far enough along. I don't really care." But they've kind of made it clear that, in my opinion, pipelines are going to win. And to be honest, and this is what could get me in trouble, and to be honest with you, sometimes I don't know if that has a hell of a lot to do with legal analysis, but that's just me. So that's just something to think about.
You guys won't need to clarify what he was talking about with the safety. I mean, I don't have to. I'm just asking if you guys want me to.
You can verify.
Okay, so he mentioned the safety aspect that was talked a lot about in the Eighth Circuit, but this specific quote that was also in the decision, "If Shelby County denies the application, it would prohibit a pipeline company from building in a certain location, even if the IUC permits construction there." So with this, we can just take a specific example from this right-of-way ordinance, the setback of 495 feet from the intersections. The IUC gives us, say they give us permission to construct in that area, but the county ordinance says, "No, you have to move out of that area." That would be in conflict with the state's ruling. So that is also in the Eighth Circuit decision, not having to do with safety, even taking a point that would apply to this.
Can I ask you a question?
I wouldn't necessarily, I understand what you're saying, and I think that's comfortably corrected. If you pass an ordinance that effectively says, "Fourth County experienced the same thing with their wind ordinance a while back," I think, right, where they, their ordinance basically was so strict, they said, "Oh, you're not going to be able to build it anywhere in the court center. Can't do that." So I, like I said, I'm not the expert on this, but I understand what, I understand what Kaylee is saying, and that's
And I'm certainly no attorney. I'm just reading quotes from them. Thank you.
So my question is, they're not, you have to provide them a route for them to approve, correct?
Correct.
And in that route, you get permission from landlords to get that. So it, I guess, I don't know, does a county qualifies a landowner to help make those decisions on the route, too?
That's about
That's the question I have.
Your conservation rule?
I'm talking just secondary roads in general, just in right-of-way. They approve the route. They don't just pick it for you. So you guys, you guys do some sort of research and survey and everything else to get the route you want, and then they approve it. Well, you check with everybody before you do it, and you check with the county, too, before you do the route, any approved or not.
I think the issue
No, they did not.
Please let, please let. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it there. I don't want to take up too much time, but, you know, we've talked about the issue of moving it further into people's fields as well. It's, you know, we don't have to go into all that. I'll, I've taken up enough time, so.
Hey, Lisa, would you, would you be willing to email me that?
The statement?
Yeah.
Yep, of course.
Everybody, please.
Yes, I will do that.
Yes. I would just like to reference that fin cylinder that was sent to Summit two walls ago, I guess, and it does state in there that counties do have the right to be involved with the site, and setback limits being one of those rights. And let me clarify, this is a right-of-way ordinance. This is not a carbon solutions or setback for pipelines. This is a right-of-way ordinance to protect our county roads, culverts, ditches, intersections that we have already paid for as, as county taxpayers. It is a right-of-way ordinance to protect us from the improper or use of our right-of-way from a private entity. So it is not specifically targeted at the pipeline industry. It is a right-of-way ordinance. And it is, as far as I know, still within state law and state code, and it's the last sentence of the code, that counties have the authority to protect their right-of-way. And that's what this is.
As long as it doesn't conflict with Iowa code, and this says that also, home rule says that also, and this ordinance is specific to setback distances specifically for pipelines.
For right-of-way.
Specifically for pipelines. So.
Yeah.
I'm a farmer. I live in Mitchell County, which I don't think, Kaylee, do you live in Mitchell County?
I do not.
So why is she having a say here? We pay taxes in Mitchell County, and lived here ever since we've been married. He's lived here all his life. I don't know why they have a say in our supervisory meeting. Their permit hasn't been totally approved because they don't have routes through South Dakota yet. And they have used, if you look at the map on the interface 1 and 2, most of it's going to be used by eminent domain. They're not working with us farmers. The farmers don't want it. If you look and work in Mitchell County, you'll notice that. Anyway, enough on that. But as a, as a property owner and taxpayer and resident on Mitchell County, I think the residents should have more say to the board than someone who's a private company that's not even in Mitchell County.
A profit, a profit company.
And so we need to reclaim the time she used, I think. There's probably going to be more discussion.
Lisa? You wanted to?
Yes, yes, thank you. It's my understanding that the federal government regulates pipeline protection for the pipeline, the things that they The things that they regulate are width of the, the diameter of the pipe, the depth of the pipe, the, they, they look at how to protect the pipeline. It is the, the role of counties to put in regulations that help protect the health, safety, and welfare, maintain and improve infrastructure, and promote economic activity, enhance quality of life. And the ordinance that's being put forth is for industries. There are changes to the world. There are new industries that are coming that have not been before. And it is, is deserving for the people of Mitchell County to have some equity, that they don't just get barreled over by every industry that comes through. It is the role of the government officials to help put those in place. Those are my, that's my first comment. My second comment is that it's really irrelevant on the status of the, the litigation that's going on. As litigation goes all through up to the Supreme Court and can have a different ruling. At each level that it's presented, it can have a different ruling, and that's the reason that it's, it's there. And right now, it's progressing to another level, it's not stopped. So all of these things are being heard because this is all new. And instead of states and the federal government and local governments preparing for this in advance, it is now the cart before the horse, and we're having to do litigation and have these discussions and work through all of these things because this wasn't prepared ahead of time on ramp up and build outs of industries that are, are new to communities. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions on the right-of-way ordinance? Not pipeline questions. I just want to encourage the supervisors to keep their focus on, on what's in the interest of the citizens of Mitchell County. Because that's who we have elected you, you represent us. Not, as Lisa said, there's lots of industries that are looking to do things, not, not just CO2 pipelines, there's, you know, there's the cloud, there's, you know, there's the Bitcoin thing, there's all kinds of other things looking to locate. And so you have to look carefully at what's coming and what, you know, what is appropriate for a local government to have a say in these new things that are coming. And your, your job is to represent the best interest of the citizens of Mitchell County.
I have a comment, if I might. You mentioned earlier on that the citizens would not be able to enjoy the project benefits.
Farmers and ethanol plants.
What are the project benefits?
Well, that might, I don't want to take up the rest of the time, but there's a lot of benefits. Number one, millions of dollars, millions of tax dollars every year would come into the county.
In what way?
Through the property taxes that we would have to pay. I'm not, I'm no tax expert, but we've done our estimates, I've presented them here, and it's well over a million, it might be up to 2 million in this county, I'm not exactly sure. As well as the farmers who want to sign up for this project because they know the benefit, that it's going to prolong the life of the ethanol plant, keep them profitable.
But no farmers have signed up?
One are.
Many, many farmers across the state of Iowa, across all five states actually have signed up before.
We're in Mitchell County.
Mitchell County. Okay, guys, I won't let anyone have any more public comments if you guys are just going to talk amongst yourselves, okay? I will cut you off. We have a person talking, please do not overtalk when she is talking or he is talking.
And I can speak to those concerns. We have not had, we have not gotten to the point where we've had land agents for a long period of time working in Mitchell County. We will. It's been, and especially on the second leg of the, of the project in Mitchell County, we have not really gotten that effort ramped up. They have been out, land agents certainly have been out, but I feel once we have more time and we're able to focus on that, we will have more people sign up. But obviously, you guys here are completely against it, I understand your, your feelings. And what we can hope to do is possibly look at ways to move off your property if, if you are against this project, but we can't do that without speaking to you, so I would hope that when you do.
Well, my, my question was project benefits, so far you've mentioned property taxes.
I also mentioned the ethanol plants, and that's going to increase, if we can keep the ethanol plants viable and profitable into the future, that's going to increase the demand of corn. We also have the sustainable aviation fuel opportunity. So once the ethanol plants can lower their carbon intensity score, they can contribute to the SAF market. And that is going to increase the demand for corn, which will, I mean, you know how much corn is grown in Iowa, I might not live in Mitchell County, but I know there's a lot of corn growers around here. And so that will increase the demand, increase the price, and the way the market works, that will increase land values for everyone, even if you're not.
I just might add that.
If you have any more questions for, sorry. Yeah. If you have any more questions for the Summit Pipeline, you need to ask outside of this public hearing. This public hearing is only for right-of-way. You have a right-of-way ordinance question, nothing to go towards the pipeline.
Just about the mention about the property taxes?
Nope, no.
Why do you still pay the property taxes?
We're, we're not going there. Can I make a suggestion that if you have right-of-way questions, Rich has been our contact with Tim Whipple, the lawyer that assembled and reviewed and answered multiple questions over the last several months on the right-of-way ordinance, that maybe we can direct those questions to?
And I'll make a statement, too. I talked to both Pam and Jim, I know we have some, I think there's some fog in the actual ordinance as it's written, as far as, you know, where it's at. So this is ordinance discussion, not pipeline, this is, you know.
Right-of-way.
As far as the private facilities in the right-of-way is what I think this ordinance focuses on. And that doesn't have to be carbon, Summit Solutions, it could be anybody, that's a private entity. So I think there's some more things that maybe we need to look at in some of the verbiage that's in here to maybe make some clarification. I think that the goal is, in this ordinance is probably, I'm trying, but I think there's some fog yet that we need to maybe look at. So I don't know if Jim, you'd agree, with Pam, you'd agree, having a discussion since there's maybe a couple of things to look at yet.
Yeah, that if those questions are areas of concern, if we can direct those to Rich, and Rich has been designated to touch base with Tim Whipple throughout this project, and I think we should.
Agreed, there's a lot of fog in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. And a lot of it has to do with current things we're doing normally as in the COVID model versus this.
Right. Okay.
This new endeavors.
Aaron?
Just, just one thing I was going to say is that today is just the first.
First reading, correct.
I kind of called it the first reading, but nobody, you don't read the ordinance out loud, read the title. So I'm saying this more just for, you know, people that are here, this is the first reading. So there's a vote, there's a vote in favor of the day, it isn't done, right? It's got to come back again. So I just didn't want somebody to think that, oh, today, whatever happens today is final action, because it's, it's.
It's not. There's. Or can they, if you have questions, can they address them to the supervisors and we can forward them on to Rich? That would be much appreciated.
I have a question on the ordinance that we've looked at here, which is based on Worth County's ordinance. And my question then is whether Sections 11, 12, and 13 in Worth County ordinance would be present in the proposed ordinance for Mitchell County.
Are you on the right ordinance, as far as I'm aware, or Worth County doesn't have a right-of-way ordinance?
No, Worth County doesn't have a right-of-way ordinance. They have a CO2 ordinance, they have a pipeline ordinance, which is different than a right-of-way ordinance.
You're looking at the county zoning ordinance?
Yeah, right.
This is discussion for a right-of-way ordinance, which I thought there were.
Because right-of-way is not under planning its own. Any more questions for the right-of-way ordinance?
I have a comment. Lisa isn't.
For the right-of-way, if it's a pipeline comment or anything else, I will not accept it.
I have a comment about the right-of-way ordinance. I just want to say that an ordinance, a right-of-way ordinance is for benefit enhancement of the county, and the people should have that, and I don't think that that is saying that we are against something else. And I take offense to that comment because this being for benefiting people in county does not necessarily mean you're against something else.
On the other hand, I am going to close this public hearing at 9:11. So we've heard from Rich saying that there could be some, some things fixed, so do we think?
I'll do some more investigation on the verbiage.
Answer some questions. Answer some questions, so table the motion? Or there is a?
I think this is just the first consideration.
This is just the first hearing, there is no action. I just have a. Okay. I just had that in my.
No.
Hi.
Here.
Nothing, never mind.
If, yeah, I don't know that you need to table it, if nothing is final here today. I'll, I'll say this, if there's going to be changes to it, then you'll, you'll be starting all over at some point, which is fine. That's better than hurrying through stuff. I don't know, I guess in order for this to pass, it's going to have to go through once, twice, then again. So whether you table it or whether you just take a vote, see what happens, nothing's going to be final today, anyway.
I don't, I don't think it's even, but it's just the first consideration today, unless we wanted to waive the first and second, but then I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah, I wouldn't be.
No.
Okay. So do we need to set the second hearing then?
There's, there's not another hearing, it's just the second consideration.
Consideration.
But you got to vote this time. Got to vote each time.
Okay, I didn't think so, but okay, all right.
Got to vote each time.
Okay.
Got to pass regardless.
All right.
I'll make a motion for number 62.
61. Well, it's different in the.
61.
Yeah. I second that motion. Mark made a motion, Pam second. Any further discussion?
I'll call Sydney.
No.
Mark.
Aye.
Aye. Pam?
Aye.
Jim?
Nay.
Motion does not pass. All right, we have one minute. So this was the first consideration, we still have two more hearings left, so hopefully we can answer some of those questions up there. Yes, and provide some clarity.
There will be no second reading or second consideration. It just died. A vote was taken and it died. My understanding, and I'm pretty sure I'm right, and if I'm wrong, I'm willing to listen, but I'm pretty sure I'm right, is the, the reason you have these considerations is, and I was reading some stuff from some of the counties as well as the Attorney General's office that kind of pointed me in this direction, I could be misinterpreting it, but I don't think I am. The first consideration comes up, you got to have a vote. In order for this ordinance to take effect, it's got to pass three times, unless you waive readings and stuff like that, which sometimes is done, but I do not believe it'd be a good idea in this case. So that's why, that's why we're not waiving multiple readings, that's why we're doing first consideration, second consideration, final consideration. First consideration, in order to have a second consideration.
Passed.
It has passed. It didn't.
See, I voted no because we said we still had some fog and that there's something that we need to fix.
And I think that's, that's, I mean, I'm not a policymaker, that makes sense to me.
Right.
Because you're saying, because now it was a chance for somebody to revisit that ordinance, if some things need to be cleared up.
Yes.
And then can come back again.
Yes.
So it's.
Okay, okay.
I see nothing wrong with.
All right.
What has happened?
I am, we need to open the second public hearing. We'll open public hearing for ordinance number 62, an ordinance amending the Mitchell County zoning ordinance, ordinance number 17 regarding provisions regulating commercial wind energy conversion systems and battery energy storage systems. I'll open it at 9:15.
You want me up here?
If you would like. Hold on a second. Any oral or written comments received from the board?
I had some.
I had, no. I had some.
I also had some.
I had none.
Rachel, any sent into the office? I just had to send out copies of it. Okay. All right. Any discussion come public regarding the wind ordinance?
I just have a suggestion for the supervisors, that you request that anyone who speaks, and this goes along with some of the feelings that were expressed about pipeline, anyone who speaks, say what county they're from and/or what organization they represent, because I think some people will have political agendas as opposed to interests of Mitchell County residents in mind. Something would be good.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All right, yeah, I'm Amanda, I'm here with the county. I live in Mitchell County, too. I was kind of the, I mean, I was the point of contact for this, but it was really reliant on the zoning commission taking roughly two years to be able to draft this amendment with the help of John Robbins from Hi-Cog. So if you guys have any, if there's any specific questions, I guess if they could either direct it to me, John, or you guys, we're going to try and be as diligent in this as possible to answer any and all questions.
And you worked very well with NextEra.
Yes, we did.
Tom is great. Tom's here. Nice to have you here. Any public comments towards the wind energy?
I just want to reiterate again that I live in Mitchell County and I'm resident in Mitchell County and a taxpayer, I own farmland, the farm, and I like to do what's best for the people of Mitchell County, not for the people who come and say other things.
Yes. Sam?
Good morning. So my name's John Robbins, I just wanted to introduce myself to everybody, I haven't met all the supervisors quite yet. I work with North Iowa Area Council of Governments. Mitchell County is a member of our organization, it's an intergovernmental organization that assists the local cities and counties in our eight-county area. So we were consulted to help Amanda in the planning and zoning commission, where supervisors write this draft ordinance, and as Amanda alluded to, there's a lot of thorough research by the commission, I mentioned supervisors as well, and Amanda, to do a lot of research on batteries, wind turbines, to construct this draft ordinance. So I am here to answer any questions you may have and do my best to assist you with making a decision.
So one of the questions that, that has come up a few times is why?
So one of the questions that has come up a few times is why was the battery energy storage tacked on to the windmill ordinance as opposed to being a separate ordinance? Perhaps you can speak to that.
Sure. So this overall ordinance draft is an amendment to your existing zoning ordinance. So once approved in its final form, it'll be actually implemented into the overall zoning ordinance that regulates land, all sorts of land uses. That's everything from your Bitcoin mining to your residential home, you know? So we created a couple of different chapters to regulate these specific uses. I offered to add on the battery storage as a part of our services because that's an important use that is going to be coming their way over the next five to 10 years. That will be tacked on to any, maybe potential utility scale wind development, any utility scale battery development. And because it's becoming a, basically batteries kind of act as a sort of like the role of a peaker plant to help stabilize the grid, those sorts of things. So that was just an additional thing we added as a part of our services in the whole services that we're providing, so.
Okay. Amanda, you want?
I just wanted to kind of touch on the fact that this draft is not its own special ordinance, like John said. It's an amendment to the current zoning ordinance. So it's, I just wanted to clarify that. They're not, it's not its own separate ordinance. I mean, the amendment is, but it'll get worked in, so.
Thank you. Any public, any more public comments towards the wind energy?
I just wanted to clarify, please protect the residents of Mitchell County and our livelihood and our enjoyment of life in Mitchell County.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Tom Treyhern. I'm with Next Era Energy. I live in the city of Marion, Lynn County, Iowa. And I assist in the development of projects and I'm a land planner by trade. And I work with our team to kind of work with counties to develop ordinances and provide information as needed to ensure that, you know, that the ordinances are drafted in a way to protect both the private property interests as well as the interests of the company. And the idea is that we can, there's a balance there. And this has been a great process. I've worked with Amanda over the year or so. And I've worked with John with Hi-Cog in other counties as well. You know, we've reviewed the ordinance and honestly, it's a good ordinance. It provides the appropriate protections, we feel. And, you know, it's going to require us to do a lot of due diligence as we develop a project, and I'm sure it will for other wind developers as well. And I'd just like to, you know, voice support for the ordinance. And, you know, I'm happy to answer questions if you have some related to that or if there's specific areas that you would have questions about. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's an excellent ordinance. I've read it with great detail. There are some spelling mistakes, and I will hand that to you guys later. I have it on a separate sheet of paper. It's not that relevant. But I'm looking at page 14 setbacks, and I'm questioning the greater of 1450 or 2.1 times the height. I think most areas use 2.1 times the height or even less than that, 1.5. I mean, it seems it's just cleaner if you just say 2.1 times the height. I mean, many of them are 650 feet, but they can be 400, 700 feet. And I think 2.1 times the height should cover that adequately. I think that's reasonable. The other question about setbacks is, I was wondering why woodlands were 1450 and why that couldn't be like 1.25? Like, if you look at the beginning of the chart, it says non-participating property lines, 1.25 is the total height. So I just have some questions, and I can submit that in writing if you would like, because there's a lot of detail here. I just wanted to bring it up. One other thing I would like to bring up, and that's number 50 on page 15, color and finish. It's B, it says C under commercial windmills. Wind turbines shall be painted non-reflective colors. I think, you know, white is important because they run cooler, they run more efficiently, they last longer, and they are safer for planes who can see them. So I would remove, I wouldn't say they have to be white, but I would remove the non-reflective term so that it would allow it to be white, so for all the reasons that I stated. And I have one other question, perhaps with a person from either from John. On page 17, let's see, I. Minimum ground clearance is 40, suggested to be 40 feet. Why that high? Is that, I mean, it's way higher than, seems like it's needed to be, but I don't know. That I'm just raising as a question.
Sure. That was something that was carried over from a previous draft that the Land and Zoning Commission developed over probably a year ago at this point. Ground clearance in other counties, there's varying anywhere from 15 to 45 feet. So it's not that much of a question.
Okay, so that's within the range of what's normally.
Yeah.
I was just wondering about that.
I never heard. Yeah.
May I finish? I've got a few others. Okay. On page 18, N, braking systems. Second paragraph, second sentence, all wind turbines shall be equipped with redundant braking systems. I think that should read all C-whacks wind turbines, because there's small wind turbines that don't necessarily have to have braking, so they don't have to have braking systems. So I think if we just, that's a point of clarity to add C-whacks in there. Yeah, I think that's, that's most of what I had.
Okay.
Thank you for all those comments. I appreciate the fact that you read through it and.
Do you want me to submit that in writing?
Yes, please.
You or? Okay, I will do that.
Or to the supervisors, whoever.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I just have a question. Now, the wind turbines you're talking about are the huge ones. I've seen an ad or something somewhere where they have newer, smaller ones that are more efficient and pick up less space.
Yes.
So why would you, which ones are you putting up? And why would you choose that?
So it's not me putting the turbines out. It would be Next Era. They are proposing the larger ones. I don't foresee the project changing. I can't speak for Tom though. But we were, we were presented with the larger turbines as a project, so that's what we planned for.
So is there some change in?
They can, they are more than, until they apply, they are more than welcome to change what they want to apply for. But what we are drafting or what was drafted was what was already presented to us. Again, they can change it anytime.
And you can ask them after the meeting as well.
I just have a question about page nine, letter J, the liability insurance. The aggregate, isn't that meaning the total? And that's only used to that $100,000? And so it seems like most insurance companies go 100 and 300,000.
That pertains to, I believe, local turbines. I don't hear that pertains to the commercial turbines. I think that's under the local turbine section.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, that'd be for like residential sized turbines.
Okay. So we're small.
Yeah, there's another side.
Yeah, there's a whole other side.
Yeah, there's another side. Beginning on section 12, page 10. So I think we're probably.
26?
Thank you.
That's close to that.
Yeah. Quizzing on my draft here.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, page 26, letter G.
10 million is the commercial.
And but is that 100,000 enough for residential?
I would think so.
If they fall under that.
Yeah, this is establishing, you know, just a minimum protection. So, I mean, it would be up to the supervisors if they want to change that amount. This is sort of something that was carried over that's fairly standard.
Right, I'm just questioning if that, you know.
That's a good question.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And actually, if you look at page 26, it has the same problem. The single incident and the aggregates are the same, which again, that addresses what she suggested about the small, small windmills.
Okay. All right. Any more public questions?
Yeah, I'm all level. I'm with Clean Energy District of Iowa. We're a nonprofit organization that promotes renewable energy and energy conservation. And I just want to commend everybody here in Mitchell County and Tom for working together. It's really nice to see people actually coming together with a workable plan. So I think everybody deserves a pat on the back, including residents of the board and running.
I just wanted to reply to your question about the woodlands and state that, you know, the setbacks and distances within regard to conservation areas and woodland areas were run by our conservation director, Mike Minor, and is in conjunction with laws and regulations on the state and federal basis. So, you know, they are within, if I'm not misunderstanding correctly from the several meetings that they've had, they are within their parameters with the SEPACs, woodlands and conservation areas.
You know, the lady over here brought up the question of smaller windmills. And I think that's, that's important because looking to the future, we do have ones that are 300 feet. I think rather than a distance, a multiple of the height of the windmill would be more appropriate because they will.
Okay. Good thinking.
I'm just interested in knowing who the gentleman is that's been offering these.
My name is Gary Levinson. I'm a resident of Mitchell County.
Thank you very much.
Not, not from here, but lived here 20 years, so I, I'm a newcomer, right?
All right. Any other public comments? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing. Yes.
Windmills.
Oh, sorry. That lady right there. She raised her hand first. Hiding behind.
I'm interested in garbage. Sometimes we fail to project 50, 70 years into the future. And, you know, the land exists forever, and windmills don't last forever. I'm a big enthusiast of wind power. It's clean energy. It's good for Mitchell County. I think this sensible, fair evaluation process they're going through is great, but when the windmills stop making money for their owners and they're left behind, they form a sort of garbage. Now, there's provisions in this, I think, proposed ordinance that, oh, the county will ensure that they'll remove them or take care of them. The problem that I'm concerned about is that we've seen a national problem with companies who will set up a corporation, declare bankruptcy, and move on in life. And we see those with leaking methane wells throughout the country. That's what happened in New Orleans. They just left these nasty wells. They're leaking methane in the atmosphere, and no one can do anything about it because they declared bankruptcy and they're gone. So it's just that thought I wanted to put into your heads about how to protect Mitchell County from that kind of future mess.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to just point one thing out that we did try to consider some of the things you're bringing up. On page 17, letter H, there's a waste disposal section, which I'm not aware of any other county besides some other draft that I work in, the Floyd County on, that has, requires them during the decommissioning phase to work with Iowa Waste Exchange, which is an entity under the Iowa DNR that's housed at Region 12 Council of Governments that assists with finding end users for like, you know, the products and certain things. So like your wind turbine blades, which, you know, there's new industry coming online to try to recycle those or repurpose those when decommission happens, things like that. So that's one thing that we did try to consider. I don't know if it's to the extent you would desire, but it's something I would say that is unique to this ordinance that we're trying to.
Thank you, Tom.
John, if you heard of any they've been using, or maybe, Tom, the blades or mesh to go into concrete now.
Yeah.
Very good news.
There's a facility in Fairfax, and I don't know if there's additional ones since that one's opened, that's outside of Cedar Rapids that crushes, grinds up the blades and adds it to, and they're experimenting with it as a hardened agent, as added to concrete. So that's one thing that's.
That's in an experimental stage, from what I understood. Is that right?
My knowledge and research, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just like to add, I agree with you, John. In fact, I was very impressed that money is put aside in advance for the decommissioning. I think that that makes it almost guaranteed that it will be just decommissioned. And I have one other comment. This is about the batteries. If you look at page 30, 3B, I think that should be deleted. It talks about when they're put together with solar panels, the battery should be in the middle. I think that's a problem because it's hard, they require more maintenance than the solar panels do, plus they require a different ground cover, gravel, as opposed to vegetation. And it'll be much larger, and the batteries come in tall containers that are eight feet tall, and that can shade the solar panels. So I'm thinking the battery should be maybe on the north side of the solar panels to avoid that, and they'll be available for maintenance. So I, I don't know. I can put that down in my suggestions. Put this in you.
Okay. Any more questions? No? I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:30. Now, this will be the first unless somebody waves a second and third.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that.
Okay. So we'll take, is there a motion to approve?
I moved to approve. I moved to approve the first consideration of ordinance 62.
You made a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
A second? Any further discussion? Pro call Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
No.
Pam.
No.
Sidney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so I will take into consideration, if you guys get comments, then I'll take those into consideration, and I can plug and play in the draft, and then I can resubmit a different draft to you. Oh, oh, sorry about that. Oh, sorry. I thought, sorry. I must be. Okay, never mind then.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yep.
I did cut you off earlier, Keith Horgan, but were you done? Mayor Horgan?
Keith, did you have anything else to say before?
Yeah.
I've got so much to say. You don't have.
We'll move on to number 13, discussion of possible action on implementing urban renewal plan. This was put on by Jim.
Yeah, so we had our workshop last week. We went over a number of things regards to possibility of four projects. We have dollar amounts from three of those entities. The conservation still is the fourth entity, but the dollar amounts are not known yet. I'm just wondering, do we want to start this process? Do we actually get bond council working on some of this stuff? I just wondered if we want to start this process, do we actually get bond council working on some of this stuff?
Okay. Any, any comments?
I think for myself, there's still some questions to be answered as far as what exactly the areas are that we're going to include in the urban renewal plan.
So. That is, so we have the conservation parks are already in. Faith Home has come to talk with Rachel and Rachel knows what that parcel is. Historic Society parcel is already in. And Stacyville did send information, but they need to get ahold of Rachel and actually let her sit down in front of her computer to make sure there's no questions in regards to that. But so there's, there's just things that.
Two, that wasn't being included in the.
Being in the plan.
For Stacyville or what?
You would be including Stacyville and Osage to include Faith Home are your two, because the conservation and historical are already part of an urban revitalization or renewal plan.
Yeah, and Rachel has the information for Faith Home. She has that.
Yep. And the Stacyville kids care sent their information. They just want to clarify and make sure that it's all completely accurate before they would proceed with anything of that nature.
I will move to make a motion to continue implementing urban renewal plan.
Todd made a motion. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Any further discussion?
I just thought we have one point seven million in local option sales tax. Do you, why don't we use that instead of going in debt with?
So the local option sales tax last time was used as an internal loan funding source. And so we, we were actually receiving interest from the turbines, paying that fund back. There was a, there was a benefit to local option sales tax, just use it as an internal loan funding source.
Which you're going to borrow money to do these other projects. Why you want to borrow money when you've got the money available right now?
As, as I said, we can use it as an internal loan funding source and have it end up with more money when it's done. If these projects become more than the one point seven million in local option sales tax, then outside funding will need to be done. And there's, I don't like borrowing money if I don't have to outside, but there's also nothing wrong with that because sometimes you simply have to do that in order to get anything done. So in combination of both, we would use internal loan and outside funding if needed.
And I, I still do have concerns about the encompassing of, of nursing home facilities because they in fact could, could do general obligation bonds and revenue bonds as well, which is how they built their, their Evergreen facility, if I'm not mistaken, several years ago. And I realize it is a large project, but I, I think that we need to be walking into that with our eyes wide open because we have other nursing home facilities within the county. And we need to be cautious about the precedents that we, we set there.
I will agree with you on the Faith Home nursing home situation and the other nursing homes that we have in the county. Faith Home is a five oh one C three, meaning it's a nonprofit. And so this, for us to help them, this is basically the only avenue that we have in order to do that. They have a multimillion dollar project that they're proceeding to do. So the amount that we're considering is minimal compared to what they are going to do, want to do. And they're going to have to come up with a lot of other funding sources in order to make this happen. The other nursing homes in the county are a for-profit facility. And we can also still help them because TIF is two different ways. You can use it as far as what we're proposing now, a forgivable loan situation, or you can use it as a rebate process. And we've used rebate processes quite often. So if a nursing home in another part of the county wants to do a project, they can compose it to us. And then if we choose to help them for their project, we could base it on a rebate process where they pay eighty percent of it, they pay a hundred percent of the tax, we rebate eighty percent of it for possibly a timeframe of ten years. We've done that with grain elevators. We've done that with businesses. It's a very common thing to do, so we can still help them.
So I just need to make it clear that what we're voting on, or would be possibly voting on now, is the implementation of an urban renewal plan. We are not dictating a certain amount of money for any or each of these entities at this time. So I need to make that.
That's correct.
Publicly known.
That's correct.
Yep.
We are just starting the process and then we will have public hearings at that time.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Record call, Jim.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
No.
Sydney.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on McIntyre property. Had Rachel ask around. Do you want to give that update?
I haven't called. And again, so it's, we own a little parcel south of the Gooseys bar. I do know Gooseys Bar would be interested in purchasing it, I believe. We acquired it on maybe a tax sale. But they're, the mayor called and hasn't been taken care of. I think the owner is used to mow it, but I think they kind of got sick of it saying, well, it's not our property, so why are we mowing it? So yeah, how we want to handle that.
So Rich and I both have had an opportunity to go out and take a look at it. And I'll maybe let Rich.
Majority of it is being maintained. It's the waterway where it's really ratty. I don't know, but I don't know what it looks like. I need to look at a lot of the scrub brush and lawn, lawn grass and weeds and stuff that probably need to get knocked down. It's not necessarily stripped in our property where it's ratty, but it's, I didn't look at property lines. I couldn't see them out there, but it looks like for the most part, the neighbors are mowing the property just to kind of keep it down. But it is the waterway area within twenty feet of the edge of the waterway. It seems as though it needs to be kind of maintained a little bit, so.
Which we would have to maintain it before we did anything with the property anyway. What is it, point one four nine acres? Is that correct? Did I read that right?
I know it's like lot fourteen.
It's a tiny parcel. And some of it's mowed on either side, but it's the little strip that contains the two covers.
The bar would consume it. It would square it up.
It would right more square.
Yeah.
So there's just still thinking about this or, I mean?
I asked them just because it made in my head, it'd make more sense. I would assume we'd probably want to contact Pinnikin as well to see if they would be interested. But then we have a public hearing. Anyone else wants it?
I think.
Yeah, how is that?
Bumps up to the east side and the bar on the west side.
Yeah.
So it does look ratty because the nods beside each side of it are well maintained.
Pinnikin's doing a little of it on their side and, and Shane's are doing a little of it on their side as well, so. It's kind of an odd.
So we can ask. We'll table it until we hear from Pinnikin and then.
And then my question for you.
You don't have to table anything. You're not on the table. Going to be, this is just a simple discussion.
Sorry, it had action.
It had possible action, but yeah, I don't think.
You can't do that today anyway. You have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I was. That's exactly.
So as a question, see if anyone else wants it and then have Aaron prepare paperwork to set like public hearing for this.
Well, here, here's what I'm gonna do. If, if somebody wants it, they're gonna have to work with me because one of some of the things I run into sometimes, I do this paperwork and then afterwards, somebody gets the property, they talk to an attorney somewhere and the attorney says, I wish it would have been done differently. And I'll say, well, I don't care. I'm the one that did it and this is the way I do it. So sometimes to, of course, sometimes I'll tell those people, okay, you do it and you send it to me. And I'll review. It doesn't really matter, but either way, I, yeah, I mean, somebody needs to decide if somebody's interested in buying it and then we can take it from there.
Well, we could just sell it to Gooseys. And so we did do an haven. We didn't take this. We just sold it to a church.
Why is it?
So we could just ask, we sold it for what, for whatever the asset had it for.
You can't do that today. You have to have a public, you're not in any.
No.
Yeah, you're not anywhere near it. You're just in a discussion phase, which is.
Right. But I think, are you asking, do we have to have a public hearing if you didn't have one for the new haven?
Correct.
We had a public. I don't know. I don't know. I wasn't part of that.
As far as I know. Look, if there, if we transferred property at some point to a public hearing, then we made a mistake, but I'm pretty confident we did not.
We had a public hearing. Okay.
So Aaron clarified this for me. So today, if we, if we want to let this be out for people to purchase this, do we need to set a date for a public hearing to make that known? So there's a document in the paper, a notice in the paper for that? Or I'm thinking of a timeline as far as what we need to do to make this happen.
Yeah, you would, but that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Somebody talks to somebody and, you know, I mean, number one, I don't want to repeat. You can't like three of you go talk somewhere to somebody and say, you guys want to buy this? You know, I mean, you can't do that. Somebody, like one of you or whoever, can talk to Gooseys or whoever, say, you guys got any interest in this? Yeah? Okay. And that's about it. And then, and then like let me know and say, hey, Gooseys is interested in this. Maybe a price is discussed, maybe it's not. Then that keeps me in on the process then to say, okay, now we go to that step and set a public hearing. That make sense?
It does. And so what, today, today I shouldn't tell Rachel, put it on the next week's agenda as far as for a public hearing to. Okay, all right. That's where I'm with her. Perfect.
Just discussion.
Perfect.
Any other discussion on the property?
So Rich is gonna have to maintain it.
Somebody, somebody's got to make a decision on if that's gonna get maintained by, who's gonna cut the brush down on the, because I think that was the complaint, right?
Right.
It wasn't whether we.
We need to, and whether we keep it or move it, we still have to maintain the little windy chunk.
We do have roadway motors that could probably, all the slopes, if you know where they're at, things like that, but.
I'm glad you just drafted yourself.
Well, I think Rich and I talked.
I just need to have that directed because it's outside of the public right away.
I think we just have consensus that we will be now taking care of it.
It will be.
As needed.
As needed. And I think that, you know, I won't speak to the landlords, but I think they're continuing to build the main parts. It's the waterway that's really the thing. And we're only doing our waterway. We're only doing our part of the waterway.
All right. Thank you, Rich.
You're most welcome for that. Before you close the meeting, I got.
I'm not done.
Before you close it, let me know because I, I want to, what I was gonna suggest is maybe, I don't know that you have to do this, but it may not be a bad idea to set a date here while, while everybody's here. Set a date for the next consideration of the wind ordinance. Nothing has to be published or anything, but at some, you know, there's gonna be a second consideration of the wind ordinance. And maybe, I don't know, it might not be a bad idea today to decide when that should be and then make a motion, approve it, you know, unless you don't know when that's gonna be. Does that make sense?
Do we, do we need to have a motion or can we just have Rachel do it for next week? Just put it on the agenda for next week?
I'm maybe getting a little bit technical here, but I kind of like a motion.
Move to approve the setting of the date for the second consideration of ordinance sixty two.
Do you make a motion?
For next week.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion?
Record call, Tom.
Aye.
Sam.
Jay.
Sydney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
No.
Motion passes. Okay, now I'm like lost here. Anything else, Aaron? No? No? Okay.
No, just, okay, one.
One more thing.
So. I, there was some discussion, said that wind ordinance, I didn't draft, so it's probably okay. There was some discussion here whether maybe there should be some amendments, if there are gonna be any amendments. How do I say, if next week, only thing that can be considered is the ordinance in its current form.
Correct.
Right? Can't be any amendments to it. If there are gonna be amendments to it, then you gotta start the whole process over, right? Publish and everything again. So you can't like have a meeting or a first consideration and then say, oh, we got some good suggestions here. Let's make these changes for next week. No, you can't do that. The only thing that could be considered next, that the next consideration and the consideration after that is in its present form.
Yes.
I just point that in case if somebody was gonna start amending it. No?
No.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay.
We'll move on to, so, so I, I just want to interrupt for just a second while you're talking about the ordinances. So the first ordinance was the right of way ordinance. And we had some additional questions to be answered, which is why Sydney said she voted no, which is, you know. So we cannot set a second hearing for that ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So that's done.
Come up for consideration again.
Okay.
Process has to be started over again. Through public notice and everything.
Yes.
Yep. Got you.
And one thing I was looking at earlier, and this is where, you know, Iowa Code, it does, a proposed ordinance or amendment shall be considered and voted on for passage at two meetings in the board prior to the meeting at which it is finally passed. So that's where I get that language from where.
Right.
You have to take a vote each time.
Okay. Number fifteen, approve recorder's monthly report for June of eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the recorder's monthly report ending June thirtieth for eight thousand two twenty-five and sixty-one cents.
Do you make a motion or a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Record call, Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Motion passes. Avoiding.
Warning.
Through treasurer's monthly report.
You guys? All right, so motor vehicle fees paid to state in June were two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars, thirty-two cents. General basic got thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and forty-two cents. Postage was one thousand, fourteen dollars. Driver's license fees to county was fifteen, twenty. We issued two hundred and seventeen license, driver's license and certificates last month. One of those was out of county for the ten dollars. Organ donor paid to state was one hundred and forty-two, ninety-four. New registration paid to the state was one hundred and seventy-one, sixty-nine and sixty-six cents. And general basic got, or the county got two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and five cents. The total motor vehicle driver's license revenue last month was four hundred and sixteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and forty cents. Of that, Mitchell County retained nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and forty-seven cents. Property taxes collected was one fourteen, one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four. Of that, about sixty-eight thousand was from the tax sale where the investors paid all the individuals, all the delinquent taxes on the third Monday in June. Of that, we sold ninety-one tax certificates, which is, has to be held by the individual that invested for at least two years. They're getting two percent a month. County for delinquents gets one and a half, so if you figure out that annually, they're earning 24% annually, so that's a pretty good return. As I've talked before, there's companies that do that, but you'll see the reflection of that a little bit later. So penalties were $8,137. Special assessments was $2,354.30. Tax sales certificates returned, redeemed, we had 44 redeemed, we sold 91. Of the 44, one was from the previous year, 43 were from June 16th. So from June 16th to June 30th, 43 people redeemed, 91, so we're just about half of them redeemed. Gets really serious, as soon as they're sold, I immediately send out a notice to the homeowners listed in the auditor's file that their property has been sold on tax sale. Certificate has, that seems to be a lot more serious than all the delinquent notices that have been in the paper. We started with 176 that were published, and we got it down to 91 were sold, and then 43 were redeemed in two weeks, so. It's kind of a quick turnaround process, it gets a little crazy, but prepaid taxes were $4,470.90. We did have a couple individuals that were on the tax sale, got nervous, so they paid next year's just to be safe. And then we set them up for email reminders, which that's the prerogative, if they want to give us the money ahead of time, we put it in a holding account. And then when taxes are figured out and the statements are prepared, then that prepaid money goes towards taxes, and then it gets sent out to the entities and transferred orders. Interest on investments was $67,655.67. And miscellaneous receipts from other county departments that were processed, there was 48 of them, for $1,736, $736,64.97. For total processes, revenues of $2,374,450.24.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mark made a motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second, any further discussion? Record call, Pam.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, just a reminder, Thursday, the, it goes around the wrong month there, Thursday the 10th, our office is closed. We have a Department of District 2 DOT trying to make some city, so most of the treasurer's offices in our region aren't closed for the day, so.
You have signs up?
Signs up, I have it on Facebook, and multiple other counties have posted as well, so we're all trying to get the word out. We do notify the DOT, they'll put it on their website as well. It should be pretty informed, individuals, I'm sure some people will be upset still. We saw people upset that we were closed, G T. And we weren't. Got a couple people come in that were mad that we were closed that day, and they're like, did you come? Because we were, we were here, so.
All right, thank you, Jim. Current auditor's quarterly report. We had liquor license, $1,025, flat books, $246, miscellaneous fees, $89, elections, $4,372.26, and passport fees of $2,415. For total of $8,120.51. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom, second, any further discussion? Record call, Jim?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Motion passes. O P, sorry, we have approved agreements for contract of services, we have quite a few here today. Resolution number 1293-25. This contract of services agreement made between Mitchell County Board Supervisors and R S V P of North Iowa has requested $5,000 for funding. Is there a motion to approve? Tom made a motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second. Any further discussion?
And just to be clear, this is all, this is all decided in our budget process, so it's not something that just happened, set in front of us now.
Correct.
We did this earlier, that's, the board knows that, but that's kind of for the public to know.
Thank you, Jim. And this particular one is the part of the Iowa childhood litigation program that we run every year.
Record call, Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next one is resolution 1294-25. This contract for services is made between Mitchell County Board Supervisors and Healthy Harvest. Healthy Harvest has requested $3,100 in funding from the Mitchell County Board Supervisors. This funding request will be used to strengthen the local food system through local farmers, producers, and businesses. Also goes in our schools. All right, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve resolution number 129425, contract of services with Healthy Harvest.
Jim made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Record call, Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Tom? Motion passes. Crisis Intervention Resolution number 1295-25. This is a contract services agreement between Mitchell County Board Supervisors and the Crisis Intervention Services. They are requesting $1,000 in funding. The funding request will be used to support safe housing, crisis services, counseling, and community education programs. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to make the approve, resolution 129525.
Tom made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. Any further discussion? Record call, Pam?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Motion passes. NICOG Housing Trust Fund Resolution number 1296-25. This is contract for services agreement made between Mitchell County Board Supervisors and the NICOG Housing Trust Fund. They are requesting $2,000. The funding request will be used to focus primarily on home repair for elderly and disabled homeowners. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mark made a motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? Record call, Sydney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution. For, sorry, Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition Resolution number 1297-25. This is a contract services agreement made between Mitchell County Board Supervisors and the Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition. They are requesting $7,000 for funding, and the funding request will be used for funding the Prime for Life program for ninth grade students in Osage, Riceville, and St. Ansgar schools. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Jim made a motion, is there a second?
A second.
I move to amend the motion that it is not just for the Prime for Life program. They are actually looking at Too Good for Drugs, so it would be either/or program, so.
Okay, I, and I'm not aware of that, so.
Right.
I can, I can withdraw my motion and you can make the motion, that's fine.
Sure. Okay. So I guess the proper way to do it is that I amend the motion to read that it is funding requested for either Too Good for Drugs or Prime for Life program, and the grades of the students are actually determined to be, I believe, 6, 8th, and 10th for all three schools, Osage, Riceville, and St. Ansgar. So you need a second on the amendment?
We have an amended motion by Pam, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Now you gotta vote on the original motion as amended.
Any further discussion? Record call, Jim?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Sydney? Aye.
Motion passes. And we have one more, right? Resolution, resolution number 1298-25. This contract services agreement made between Mitchell County Board Supervisors and Riceville Community Club. Riceville Community Club has requested $500 in funding from the Mitchell County Board Supervisors. The funding request will help defray expenses for WOPI Day's festival. Some of the events being planned include four bands, state sanctioned kids, tractor pull, car, motorcycle, tractor show, inflatables, balloons, space painting, parade, and petting zoo. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve resolution number 129825, contract for services with the Riceville Community Club for WOPI Penny King Festival.
Jim made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Jim, second, any further discussion? Record call, Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Sydney? Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Motion passes. I believe there are no more contract services. I didn't note meeting attended.
I had one.
I had, uh, Lantaro, I forgot my notes. I had no other meetings last week.
None, just a meeting with Dan Holt on our. Whatever they go on.
Okay.
I had a Zoom meeting with F M C, E C I, D C A, T Corp, F C, P P C, all affiliated with H H S on realignment, redistricting, and there really isn't anything happening right now. They know, they know it's coming, but nobody seems to have any details, so. A couple of them, the E C I, D C A, we've been told that 25, 26 year is moved forward, we've been funded, but what goes on beyond that? And also I had a Fair Board meeting, pretty much it's, everything is ready to go, contracts are in, got some electrical to do yet. Again, there's several more vendors that want in for food, so the grounds are gonna be anything you want, there's two, there's gonna be there, so. Grandstand events are all contract signed and returned, and everybody's a go for that, so. It won't be long, there'll be here, so, oh, Bailey for the 4H, and the number of animals has, have exceeded, if they all show, or sometimes they feel back out. We'll have more than we had last year, so it's gonna be a full house.
That's very good.
Very good.
That's it.
All right. Public comment. So I've got two or three questions here, and then a potential comment based off what the answer to the questions are. So it sounds like, just for clarification, with the right-of-way ordinance, the next step would be to start over, setting a public hearing, putting that notice out into the paper, maybe on the county site, is that correct, first off?
We will work through the ordinance as Rich stated, that there's some fog areas, so we're gonna work through that, and then we will have to republish, yes.
Okay, and then with that, is there a public comment period for ordinances outside of the public hearing?
Technically, no.
No, okay.
My suggestion would be that if you have access to the, the hearing, or the ordinance, or any of those publications, to forward your questions to the supervisors, and they can forward them on, because we certainly want to consider them before we get to a point of no return.
Yep.
Okay, that's helpful, I think that's all I have to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stan?
It was mentioned here again this morning that there's about 150 possible projects that, in the county, that could use TIF funding, is that correct? Oh, I stated that we have 152 structures in the county, I, I don't, that's what the. That all of those structures could use TIF funding. No, not all, they're not all structurally deficient or weight restricted, there's 28 of them that are, the other ones are, uh, that's the total number, and I guess I also need to clarify that a structure is defined by the state of something with a span of 20 feet or more, we have hundreds that are under the 20 feet, so there's a lot more than 152 things that could be worked on. Okay, but in other words, none of those were included in this first go-around for projects that were, were funded with TIF. And so they're not necessarily a priority, but when you take a look at what the mayor of St. Ansgar requested, it sounds like that is a priority, and you've got some issues in Riceville that, uh, structure issues that really should be a priority, you've got, you need some infrastructure here in Osage. Basically, uh, I really feel this board has to start taking a look at, uh, using TIF, you're, you're sitting at $27 million of TIF money, and there are priorities that need to be done. And if we're going to grow, like some of you want to grow, and that, you can't be sitting on this money, you gotta make it work for you. And it sounded to me, again, like this morning, that another wind farm is coming to Mitchell County. If that is coming to Mitchell County, my understanding is there's a possible additional $50 million of TIF money. Are we just gonna be sitting on that? You've got projects. You've got projects, and you ought to be looking at them.
So I'd like to address your comment that I've heard repeatedly about the 27 million that we're sitting on. And, and let me state that in a few years, a couple of these TIF districts will, will be out. So right now, we're, we're looking at, what is it, 1.27 million in a few years of in, of income coming in. We still have to pay back debt, so looking at it from just one side is, is just a little bit jaded. We have to look at all aspects of the debt payback, as well as where do we sit right now? We don't have any new windmills on the ground building right now, and from what I understand, even if that project goes through, it would still be a few more years before we would be at that point. So I think we need to look at what we have for debt and debt repayment capacity. I'm not saying one way or another, Stan, but I think we need to be real cognizant of the projects.
Wrong on the 27.
And that's all right, that's all right.
Well, because.
That's all right.
That money will be coming in. That, this is the potential.
The 27 million is the total amount over those years. Over those years, but we don't get 27 million in a year, we.
That is correct.
It's over the next several years.
You will get the total 27 million.
Okay, but you have to pay back the debt.
Well, that's how you pay back the debt, is.
One year at a time.
And it comes back in.
One year at a time.
As property tax, and it gets paid back. As property tax, and it gets paid back in property tax. I'm sorry, you were wrong with that.
All right.
Thank you.
You're entitled to that thought.
Any more public comments? I'm going to end the meeting at 10:20.